A lot of videos playing, you have to ask everybody to turn your phones off to quiet. You have to turn them off, just turn them on quiet. Good evening and welcome to the May 4th Valley View School Board Meeting. I'd like to ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Venegas, please, for the final time, if you would, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Venegas is also going to lead us in the Board Mission Statement.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards an all-students learning through rigorous curricula, meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments, with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Moving down the agenda, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. Quigley, I'd like to ask that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, ayes have it. Consent Agenda Items, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items 5-1 and 5-2 as presented. 5-1, Board Meeting Minutes, April 27th, 2015. 5-2, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, April 27th, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, no, roll call vote, please, roll call vote.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
President, President Quigley?
Yes. Liaison reports, any and all, from my right, Ms. Campbell first?
Yes. I had the privilege of attending We Day. I'd be like the teacher, how many in here know what We Day is all about? Got a few people over there, We Day. So we had We Day, Illinois, and I guess I'm really, really old because I didn't even know who Selena Gomez was, she was the emcee, but I don't watch TV and I don't listen to radio that much, so. But we attended the We Day out at the All-State Arena and it was great, was all these young people who were energized. I'm looking for my friend Noel Kendra and his daddy's taking him out and I'm calling him to help me. Nolan.
There he goes.
He always, I always played with him because of my preschoolness in me and so then he always dodges me and try to get away from him and I never let him get away. But let me just read a little bit about We Day. We Day is a worldwide movement to get more young people involved in making the world a better place. We Day is about inspiring and moving youth to become leaders, not only by spreading the word of work that they're doing, but also by encouraging them to live by taking action. The founders, they wanted to light a spark and motivate the young people and these two young men, Craig Gilbert, I believe in his brother, they started this like 20 years ago when they were 12-years-old. And they want us to think about, we want to celebrate the good that exists in every young person, to create a positive change in the world. And he said, "I think so often we see youth as almost problems to be solved." He said, "Keep them away from the negative, keep them off the streets, but I think youth can do much more." And so this is what it was all about, you could not buy a ticket to get there, you had to volunteer. And there was great, all kinds of young people that were there, that have done things locally, nationally. Like I said, the only people I knew was Sean Connery and Nelson Mandela's grandson because he looked like his grandfather. But there were so many other people and they highlighted, the young people were all excited with Jennifer Hudson and her band did. And it was this young man, he's a motivational speaker, he's nine-years-old, and there was some sign languages, there were young people who had HIV and there was a lady from Kenya who came because people had, did things to have served. All these were young people that had all these movements, there were some young people in Inglewood, the roughest community in the city of Chicago, that they had started a peace movement. There was another young lady who had been bullied, who started collecting teddy bears and I mean, there was everybody, there was a young lady who grew up in India who was bullied, you know, so it was just exciting. And then this young man, Magic Johnson, gave him his T-shirt, you know, he's a motivational speaker, he's nine, he has an artificial leg. And so it was just exciting to see all these young people out there and all these lights going and they had all kinds of movements and it was like a classroom setting there. And so I wanted to just take this opportunity to see what young people, and I don't know, it just, I recycle my water, I do, actually take the water from the sink and put it somewhere else. And so, but they, the thing that he made was that said about, you know, about how much, how much we waste and how much water and how many kids are dying for lack of proper water. And he challenged all of us to never let the water, the little thing that you can do is to never let that water run while you're brushing your teeth. And so I'm just excited about it and there's actually a curriculum and some of the teachers were there. And so it was, it was exciting, I didn't know that my half-sister was there, she's a special ed teacher in Chicago, until I looked at her Facebook posted. So it was, it was really great. So with that, I also obtained, I did not get a T-shirt, I got one for being there. I was invited because I am the Three Rivers Division Vice Chairperson, but I did bring a We Day bag for all of my fellow board members, those that are coming, those that are leaving, and then a kit that I wanted to give to Mrs. Kendra and see what we can do about empowerment. And the reason that it was called We, because it's empowering people, whether it's being bullied, whether just caring for somebody, to take the me out of it and put the we in it, you know, and kids have to help us sometime. I think of Dr. Van Winkle, he's always give his graduation speech, it was always, "Dr. Seuss, you learn everything you need in kindergarten." And so I much, I so much believe that. So if we start thinking like some of our little ones, that it's not me, but it's we and we can do a better job if we all have the mentality of we. So I just got some volunteers, which Mrs. Paulson, I don't know her new name now, congratulations and God bless you, she's newly married, so I don't know her new name, but she's assisted me with some little helpers to come and pass out a We Day bag and I especially wanted my right-hand person, I won't have to, I won't have him on my right hand anymore, Mr. Leo Venegas, and I know he has things, adoption is his passion and looking out for those that cannot help themselves. So I am truly going to miss my friend Leo and then since Dr. Mitchum says that he'll be seeing Rick around, so I left a bag for him and I do thank both of them for taking this time. Like people always, I have to tell them, my real job is Catholic charities, you know, everybody thinks that this is my real job. And so as Rick has mentioned, and for us, Leo, that sit here, that's not a paying job, it's a hard job, Dr. Mitchum always meant, and we know we're teachers, professional, all this, it's a hard job because it's not about the money. So I just pray that this day that our heart will be calm and we'll just be entwined as a true Valley View School District, like a board member Leo said before, that because that there's no Hispanics sitting on the board, there will still be Hispanic representation on this board. And that we are thinking about all and our special needs, some of you know our friend, Charles, he wasn't able to come tonight, I wanted Charles to help me out, but it's just good to have we instead of me. So if my little friends will come and help me out, I'd appreciate it.
Come on up, guys.
That's yours. Oh, Lu Canzak and Brooks students attended, I didn't see y'all out there, I was making lots of noise too. So we thank Lu Canzak and Brooks students who were there at We Day.
Thank you. Next, liaison reports from my left, let you go left. Anybody else have any liaison reports?
We have two.
Go ahead.
Okay, I attended three meetings last week, one meeting was the Alternative to Discipline Program Subcommittee. At the meeting proposals were made and discussed concerning community and school service projects that students can be involved in as an alternative option to expulsion. Second Committee Meeting was devoted to the Mastery Learning and Reassessment. Purpose of this meeting was to define Mastery Learning and begin discussions about the language of the retake policy, to make sure they are more consistent and understood throughout the district. This is an ongoing committee and the meeting again before the end of the year. And the last meeting was today on curriculum, we discussed effectiveness of the new enhancement program for math, which we have found to be very effective. We talked about the Odyssey and Language Arts and that's going to be changing somewhat, being more like the math, being taught by teachers that have those children throughout the day. We talked about the logistics of the park testing and how that worked the first time and how it's working much better this time. We also discussed a percentage of students, both at the high schools, that are registered to attend college and both a four-year and a junior college. At this time, we only have the results based on the FASSA results of who is registered and we discussed what type of staff development will be planned for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
With regards to Wilco Area Career Center, I'd like to announce that Ms. Katrina Pleas will be retiring at the end of next year. She's the current Executive Director, has been in place and she has done a phenomenal job and really helped make that Career Center an excellent opportunity for the children of Valley View, Romeo-Ville and Bolingbrook High School with various options. I am on the committee for the process of implementing her replacement, so I'll keep you guys posted on that as well. Lastly, I'd like to announce the Students of the Month for March and April, bear with me because there's 14 for each month and Valley View has seven of the 14. And if you don't know, Wilco, there's several school districts and several high schools that are a part of it and for us to literally have 14 of the 28 over the last two months is a phenomenal thing to say about the Students of Valley View. So I'd like to congratulate Kaylee Duranty in Aviation from Romeo-Ville High School, Taylor Palomo, Computer Technology from Romeo-Ville High School, Hannah Eichelberger in Culinary Arts from Romeo-Ville High School, Caitlin Montrose in Early Childhood from Bolingbrook High School, Covenant Filana, Game Design from Bolingbrook High School, Jeanette Cortez in Intro to Health Professions from Romeo-Ville High School, and Joseph Alexander in Welding from Bolingbrook High School. For April, we have congratulations and shout-outs to Nicholas Sultan in Autobody from Bolingbrook High School, Lydia Harrison in Aviation from Bolingbrook High School, Ivory Walton, Certified Nursing Assistant from Romeo-Ville High School, Nicholas Moore in Computer Technology from Romeo-Ville High School, Emily Lopez in Early Childhood from Romeo-Ville High School, Titus Wansey in Fire Science from Bolingbrook High School, and last but certainly not least, Andrea Reidy or Reed, Intro to Health Professions from Romeo-Ville High School. I apologize if I butchered any of those names, but I thought it was important for those 14 students to be recognized, so congratulations to them.
Thank you.
So I know that last week, one of our board members, our Vice President, Mr. Regu, just said his goodbyes and as I shared last week, I'm not much of a goodbye person, but I did want to share some thoughts for our current board and our new board members that are here tonight that will be taking oath for us. For me, it's not about a goodbye, but more of a, you know, we'll see you guys around because I will be around, as I stated. Most people will say that it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this board and for me, it wasn't quite that way, or it's not that way actually at all. For me, it's more of, it's an honor and a privilege to serve the community and I know that that's what we've done here with this board. I want to thank all of our board members, the administration, our educators, and our community for the experience because the good, the bad, the ugly, this, as fun as we'd had up here, also we had some very tough and challenging times, but I know that we did the right thing and a lot of tough decisions were made with the students, the educators, and the community in mind. But I wanted to share something with you guys that, because as I thought about what I was going to say up here, I realized there's something that is missing when we come up here and discuss our mission and the beliefs that. We came up here, when I took this position four years ago and when we brought on Mr. Jim Mitchum and our new administrative staff here with our board, Mitchum and the team here, our superintendent and team here came up with a belief and I want to share that because I think that kind of encompasses what we were charged to do as a board. And if you don't know this, it's actually part of our mission statement. It states that the belief that every student has the capacity to learn and to achieve his or her full potential is the foundation on which our efforts rest. We hold high expectations and provide support to ensure academic success for all students in Valley View School District. Regardless of race, gender, income, geography, disabilities, or native language, this will be accomplished through enhancing cultural competency, broadening inclusion of students with disabilities in the regular education setting, focusing our resources to support schools with high proportions of at-risk students with sound strategies to ensure that all students will be successful, developing the knowledge and life skills necessary to be productive members of the community, establishing learning environments characterized by a genuine empathy for all students and in which their cultural and linguistic diversities are celebrated, embraced, and utilized when designing and delivering lessons. We set ourselves on this board and I believe that we have accomplished many of those items. And I challenge and I charge this board and these new members that are going to be providing this, to continue those beliefs, to continue growing what we've established here four-and-a-half, five-years ago and to really take those beliefs on in your heart. It's okay to say no, it's okay to have good debate, it's okay not to be the yes person, it's okay to question and challenge the norm, you should celebrate that. You're empowered, you are here to speak and represent the community that has trusted you with their voice. So I just want to thank President Quigley, our attorney, John Driscoll, Crystal, I'll be seeing you, I see you all way too much, that's awesome, Mr. Felice, Ms. Socora, Mr. Mitchum, Ms. Casey, Mr. Grisoffi, as much as I didn't agree with Bolingbrook not paying us the $4 million or taking that, I still appreciate all your efforts because that still bothers me to this day, but I can live with it. Sharon and Ms. Kendra, I do really appreciate all the hard work. Keep up the great work, guys, I know that we are in the right direction and we can only get better, so, thank you.
Thank you, Leo. For those of you, for those of you who don't know, is Leo also volunteers through his church and there's an organization, I'll probably butcher the name, but Hogard de Pablo?
Hogard de Pobre.
See, there you go. It's the home of the poor, correct?
Yes.
And they raise money for an orphanage in Mexico and if you ever hear him give his ask at a Sunday Mass, you will reach into your wallet because it's an unbelievably touching speech, it really is. And I will never steal the line that you use at the end because that's yours and yours alone, but it's fantastic. You can't get your final paycheck until you leave the computer, just so you know.
Got it, I will leave it behind, but I'm taking my name plate.
But thank you, Leo, for your efforts and on behalf of everybody else, we did that last week or last week, last week, so, thank you so much and I know we'll be in touch and see you out in the community, so. With that said, a motion to adjourn, signee die, which means end of all things in Latin, that would be the end of this board and the beginning of a new board, motion would be in order. There's motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, Leo, thank you.
No, I don't want Leo to go, so I say no.
Thank you very much.
Now, we will call to order the new board. So I would ask, is that right? Diane Perro and JT Beduris to come forward. Why don't we all go down there because we can, we all have to take the open, well, the three of us have to take the office together.
If there's anybody that would like to come up by Larry, I'm sure Larry won't mind if you want to take a picture right by Mr. Aranda, you get a better shot, trust me, he's got the best angle in the house.
Please, right, is your right hand? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Steve Quigley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of member of the Board of Education of Valley View School District.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education of Valley View School District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that
I further swear that
I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer's interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board
while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual
and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Oh, he needs a picture.
I guess I get the spots, I can leave one on the left and on the right, huh? I run them away or not?
That being done, called order of the meeting and the oath of office being called, roll call of the new board will be done, conducted by, I guess we'll do the roll call, ma'am clerk, do the roll call, please.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Here.
Member Socora?
Here.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member, Member Beduris?
Here.
Going to have to practice that, sorry. Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Here.
President Quigley?
Yes. A motion would be in order to appoint a president pro temp to act for the election of officers of this board.
Can I nominate Dan?
No, 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 wait, no.
President pro temp?
President pro temp.
Is John?
Yeah, it's John.
Yes, it's John, okay.
Correct.
John, you're it.
Second.
You need a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, ayes have it. Meeting's now turned over to Mr. O'Driscoll, if you would, please.
Okay, walk us through the process. Yeah, the process is relatively simple, we're going to go through the election of board president, then a board vice president, then a board secretary, and then appoint the treasurer. We're going to call for a motion to elect the board president, which will need a second, and then a roll call vote on that. One board member, it's one vote, so. With that, are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to
Elect the board president?
Elect the board president and Steve Quigley.
Second.
I nominate Liz Campbell.
Is there a second? Okay, so there's one proper motion on the table, the second one fails. We have a roll call vote as to board president, Steve Quigley, please.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
No.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Quigley?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. Quigley is the board president and therefore I turn it over back to him.
Thank you, thank you for your confidence, fellow board members. We will now be in order to have a motion for Vice President of the Board.
I nominate Liz Campbell.
We have a motion for Liz Campbell. Is there a second? Hearing none.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Crystal Hanson for Vice President.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, seeing none. We have a motion and a second for Crystal Hanson to be board vice president. Ma'am clerk, please take the roll call.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
No.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, we have a motion for Board Secretary.
I nominate Liz Campbell.
We have a nomination for Liz Campbell, is there a second? Being no second, are there any other nominations for Board Secretary?
I nominate Deb Socora.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Deb Socora to be Board Secretary. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, seeing none. Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
No.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. At this time, we need to appoint a board treasurer. A motion would be in order.
No, she's aware of her treasure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to approve and second Joanne Borges treasurer. Sorry about that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Are there any others? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. The board have been set and approved. We hereby are who we are. So, thank you, and thank you, and Joanne? Where's Joanne? Out there in the audience, thank you. Back to the agenda of the regular scheduled meeting for the season. I've lost my agenda. Treasurers' report. Mr. Gersafi, if you would please.
Yes, the treasurer's report today does not include your typical bevy of reports due to the fact that the meeting was moved up a week. We did not, we were not able to close the books, if you will, and prepare the financials. So those will be forthcoming on the 25th meeting of this month. But we do have the schedule of bills prepared so we can pay our bills. And so the schedule of bills is attached for May 2015, totaling $2,528,894.77 for your approval and action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next up, pillars of Valley View. First up, Mr. Felice and the Valley View Early Childhood Center. Principal Brown, please step forward with your nominee.
Good evening, Valley View Community School District School Board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, and the entire Valley View school community. It is a sincere privilege to present two members of the Valley View Early Childhood family who consistently demonstrate the characteristics which make them Valley View pillars. In the early childhood setting, the role of speech and language pathologist is so important as our little friends are at such varied levels in this area. We are so fortunate to have Mrs. Becky Navatney to serve in this role in EC. She is extremely attentive to the needs of our students and families. She takes the time to research strategies and tools that will help students at school and at home. While Becky is an outstanding professional and colleague, more importantly, Becky is always consistently rises to the occasion to serve as a leader in the building. She always demonstrates a can-do attitude about everything. She serves as an active mentor to new speech therapists. She willingly shares her expertise with them on a regular basis. Becky is always flexible in the ever-changing environment of the district's youngest learners. Becky is the first to alter her schedule to accommodate the needs of the staff and students. The ways that Becky serves the EC community is endless. Becky Navatney sincerely exemplifies the true meaning of the pillars of Valley View. Next, taking on a new position is never an easy task. When one is able to do it seamlessly, it is always a win-win situation for all involved. Mrs. Tanya Williams took on the role of assessment team teacher in the early childhood building after being a classroom teacher for several years. Being on the assessment team is such a key role in the EC building as they help to determine services for our little ones. One would never know that this is Tanya's first year in the position. It is a leadership role as the teacher coordinates the entire process. Tanya has taken her experience as an outstanding classroom teacher and applied it to her role on the assessment team effortlessly. She is a very valuable resources as teachers seek her advice on a regular basis. Past parents are always asking for Ms. Tanya, and they always want to visit her and request her as a classroom teacher and express sincere disappointment when they hear she's not a classroom teacher anymore. My response to this is that she is able to help many more families in her current role. The stories about how she has made an impact on children and families goes on forever. Tanya is a leader, teacher, colleague, and has a positive effect on everyone she encounters. Tanya is definitely the epitome of what the pillars of Valley View represents.
Thank you. Next up, independents. Ms. Mokehi, please. And Member Socora. Secretary Socora.
Good evening, Valley View School Board. Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership and members of the community. Independent School is pleased to recognize two teachers who continuously strive to make an impact on the lives of others. Fifth grade teacher Christine Fairbarren and kindergarten teacher and Valley View School District alumni Katie Malahe continuously find ways to build relationships and bring positivity to those around them. Not only are they excellent classroom teachers, these two ladies touch the lives of others in many ways on a daily basis. Ms. Malahe is the grade level representative for kindergarten and guides her team to embrace new ideas and initiatives. She sets high goals for her young learners and holds them to these goals. Katie makes sure that her student's first school experience is a quality one. Mrs. Fairbarren creates a special bond with her fifth grade students and prepares them to make the transition to middle school, both academically and socially. Additionally, Christine can be found outside every day in all sorts of weather as a parking lot dismissal supervisor, which if you've been around independents, is no small feat at dismissal time. She takes safety to a new level and can look at one of the over 200 cars that come through our parking lot on a daily basis and tell you which student gets in each and every car. Outside of the classroom, these teachers have served as tutors, mentors, and cheerleaders to students and staff. They are regulars at almost all school and PTL functions and support the greater community at large. As members of the school's leadership team, Christine and Katie make substantial contributions towards the programs and initiatives that take place. Not only do they help to identify needs within the school, they will problem solve and lead the staff towards a resolution. Finally, Christine's and Katie's impact is felt outside the school building as well. Organizing a food drive this year to support Power Connection and then collecting over $1,000 in spare change to buy Toys for the Toys for Tots program are just a couple more examples of how these young women make a difference. Please join me in recognizing Katie Malahe and Christine Fairbarren as the independent school pillars of Valley View.
Thank you, ladies. Next up, is there anybody who wishes to address the board this evening from the audience? Oh, I'm sorry. I checked off the STEM fair accidentally. Middle School STEM Fair. Science, technology, engineering, and math.
Very good. Good evening, Secretary Socora, Vice President Hanson, President Quigley, senior leadership, and the Valley View community. On March 26, we held our first annual Middle School VVSD STEM Fair after receiving a grant from the Valley View Educational and Richen Foundation. We have a couple students here tonight that we'd like to recognize. In total, there were nine students, three from each grade level, who won third, second, and first place. Tonight, we have with us from Martinez Middle School, Fatima Islam, who got second place at the sixth grade level. So she can come up. Also with us this evening from seventh grade, who won first place, Ryan Cyan. Unfortunately, our middle schoolers are very busy, and we also had a Scholastic Bowl competition tonight at Humphrey Middle School. And so several of our individuals couldn't be here. I'm just going to read the list, and if we could hold the applause till the end. In third place at sixth grade, Ben Jewell. And in first place at sixth grade from Brooks Middle School, Niantara Das. At the seventh grade level, in third place from Brooks Middle School, Mason Babasic. In second place from Jane Adams Middle School, Jamobi Awololo. And in first place was Ryan. At the eighth grade level, in third place from Jane Adams, Jessica Stevens. In second place from Jane Adams, Ajabere. And in first place from Lukansik Middle School, Michael Gabarsik.
So while Larry is taking pictures, we, students, we know you have stuff to do and don't want to sit here through the rest of the meeting, so feel free to depart when you want. Next up, audience participation. Is anybody who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none?
She's, I think somebody's coming. Somebody's coming.
Oh, we have somebody coming up. Please state your name and where you are from.
Good evening, all. I am Betty Sharad. Of course, you probably know that by now. And I'm back again. And I would like to address the board again tonight, as I did on the last board meeting. I want you to know that I am still highly dissatisfied with the riffing process. I'm also dissatisfied with the answer that was given at the last board meeting. The only thing I heard was the situation that had been addressed, and which was a good thing, at RC Hill. I didn't hear any of the others that were addressed. And I would like for you, I'm coming to remind you again that you are responsible to the community to keep us informed on this riffing process that's been occurring for the past three years. Very dissatisfied with that, and the community is dissatisfied with that. And I'd like to hear the progress that has been made with that. You know, we were supposed to talk about that. There was a yes vote from the board members. You voted yes, and you tabled it, and you said it would be open, it would come back up for a discussion. I want to know, has any discussion been, anything been discussed? And what has come out of that discussion? So maybe at some point, if you're not ready to address that now, you will address that before the meeting is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, hearing no one. Student due processes.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the board approve student due process cases A through G as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perro?
abstained.
Member Beduris?
abstained.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
And President Quigley?
Yes. School board meeting schedule, 2015, 2016. Dr. Mitchum?
Yes. Action item 14.2. I ask that the board approve the school board meeting scheduled for 2015, 2016 as presented.
So moved. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody got issues with any of the dates that are on there? If you do, speak now. If not, motion to approve has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. 2016 schedule.
Action item 14.3. I ask that the board approve the school board meeting minutes, schedule, excuse me, school board meeting schedule for 2016, 2017 as presented.
Motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Once again, if there's any dates on there that you have a problem with, obviously, that's a long ways out, but at least we'll get it on the calendar, and those dates could change. No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Gary Gersafi, food equipment.
We've got two actions this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No report.
No report, yeah. I didn't think so. Mr. Gersafi, if you would please. Got you all choked up by the kitchen.
Don't make me laugh. Two actions this evening, first being kitchen equipment for nine sites, replacing 24 pieces of equipment. Most of them are elementary school steamers that are 20 to 30 years old. Also, a dish machine at Rummyville High School that was purchased, originally purchased in 1974. So, again, fair to say we did get our money's worth. Recommending Edward Don and Company at Woodbridge, Illinois is the lowest bidder in an amount of $94,655.74 is recommended.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion about the dishwashers? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. We are spending money.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
For the benefit of our two newest board members, kind of a recap of what we presented as an information item at our last meeting. Back in 2014, the board did approve a three-year student fee schedule for student fees, obviously, being the current year and two years out, with the understanding that we would come back at a later date with a, some kind of family cap or student, or family discount. And so, last month, we presented an option to discount or apply a discount to families automatically with no paperwork required to the tune of $10 per student registration fee credit at the elementary level that would apply from pre-K through five. Middle school family, students would, from sixth to eighth grade, $15 per student registration fee credit. And high school students, nine through 12, $20 per student fee credit. Provide an example there. And also, the amount estimated that the discount would cost us in terms of student fees not collected. And so, we had some questions. Hopefully, we answered those questions. We did modify that a little bit so that it was a little easier to understand. And so at this time, we are recommending approval of that for multi-student family discount credit on student fees beginning for our next school year, 2015, 2016.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion about fees, or reducing fees for multi-students? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Socora?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next up, Ms. Hawkes.
Thank you, President Quigley. Action report 17.1 this evening is consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. We're seeking your approval on 17 items for certified personnel, 27 on classified, and four for administrative certified personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris? Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sakura?
Yes.
Vice President Hanson?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yep.
Before we move on, President Quigley, the board did just approve a couple of administrative recommendations that we had brought, so I would like to just take a minute to introduce to you the people that were just approved. You don't have to come up and say anything, you can just stand and we'll recognize you there. The first person will be Mr. Albert Brass Jr. Mr. Brass is going to be the Assistant Principal for Student Services at Bolingbrook High School. He comes from us from Joliet Township, 204, District 204, with 15-plus years of experience as a Dean of Students and Guidance Counselor. So we're excited to have him. And then, our next recommendation this evening is for Mr. Joshua Gage, Assistant Principal at Lucansick Middle School. Mr. Gage has been with the district for 12 years, teaching middle school, language arts, and also is key leader. He's currently, or has been, I think, the whole 12 years at Jane Addams Middle School. So he's taking the Assistant Principal at Lucansick. We're excited and we're expecting great things. Welcome.
Still going to coach? Josh?
Can't do that as an administrator.
Oh, what a shame. You can chime in your two cents' worth, though, right? Next up, Mr. Grzafi, cleaning contract renewal.
Two information reports. Yes, GCA Services Group is our custodial cleaning contractor. They've been providing cleaning services throughout our schools for the past 18 years, since 1997. This is the fourth contract with the district. We bid it out three years ago, completing their third year, and we have the option to renew two one-year options. We are bringing the recommendation at our next meeting. They've agreed to hold their price for the current year in recognition of our budget challenges. However, due to the Affordable Care Act, they are being forced to provide insurance to their, to their custodians that service our district. Right now, they are without insurance. They have 104 custodians working throughout, again, our buildings. And so, not knowing what that cost is going to be until open enrollment occurs, they are hoping to have an amount, a dollar amount, in which the contract cost would increase going forward, but hopefully, will not exceed anything that, any cost that they're going to incur with this, this offer for healthcare, because they just don't know how many of the, of the custodians are going to take the insurance. And so, we've been very pleased with their service. We have very few complaints, we have no complaints, quite honestly. I think if you spend any time in our buildings, I think it's pretty evident that they do a fantastic job. Many of the custodians live in the community, and so, I think we're probably one of the few districts that have not had insurance as part of the overall package. And so, again, with the advent of ACT, Affordable Care Act, the timing is such that it will be mandatory to be offered.
Couple of quick questions. Who's responsible, the, is GCA or is the district responsible for all of the bigger equipment, like the floor scrubbers and all that? Do they provide that, or do we buy it, and is it our equipment?
It is their equipment, and they do provide it.
So they're responsible for servicing it if it goes down, or they have a backup plan to replace things so that we're not without it, any of our buildings, correct?
The last renewal, we, we asked them for an inventory of what the larger pieces were and the age of that equipment, so we were, we were assured that the equipment wasn't aging and going to be failing on the job. If it does fail and it can't be repaired, it is their, is a requirement of the contract that it be replaced.
And then, so they turn that aging equipment list into, Mike, or so that every year, they turn that in?
Yes, and pretty much, we're three years old. I mean, it's, we, we pretty much said we want new equipment throughout the district with this last renewal.
All right. And then, lastly, with regards to the insurance, is, just for the education of myself and then anybody out there that might not know, is it insurance offered for the janitors as well as their families, or just the janitors that are employed?
They will be providing options in terms of single or family. It is, I believe, a United Healthcare Bronze Plan, if you're familiar with what the plans are like in terms of the exchange, but it will be optional for single or family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, you got the roof replacement, ABM.
ABM's roof in the North Dome is approaching its, I'm sorry, its South Dome is approaching its, end of its useful life. I'm sorry, it is the North Dome. Apologize. Majority of the roof has been replaced over the past eight years, last one being the South Dome in 2013. It is, as I stated, 21 years old. Splits are starting to appear, and the membrane is getting brittle and difficult to repair. We've advertised for bids. On April 24th, will be opened on May 15th, with a cost of construction hopefully not to exceed $500,000, to be funded in the building and operations maintenance budget for the fiscal year '16. So again, just information at this time.
Any questions or comments, Gary, on this? We will see that on the next, or after the board, after the bids come in, I suppose?
Probably on the 20, 25th meeting, correct.
Great. Thank you. Administrative job description.
President Quigley, information report 18.3 this evening, and we're bringing for an information report, a job description. This is for a new position. It is Assistant Principal for the Early Childhood Program. This position is funded by the Preschool Expansion Grant that was awarded to the district this year, and due to the increase in classes, we are asking that you review this job description. If you have any questions, please let me know. We will be seeking your approval for it at the May 26th board meeting.
Any comments, questions?
What happens when this preschool expansion grant is gone?
What's the sustainability?
And no longer will be paid for by that? I assume then we have to pick up the...
We will either pick it up or have to reevaluate at that point in time.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the only question I was going to ask. Legal services report.
No formal report.
Thank you. AFT reports.
No report.
Valley View Council report.
No reports.
Valley View Office Personnel.
Actually, we have a small report, sorry.
Small report, okay. I saw you coming up, and I'm like, wait a minute.
I know, I'm like, actually. Good evening. I'm Vice President Claudine Sharco of the Valley View Council, Local 604. I'm also speaking on behalf of Greg Harris, who is our president-elect. I just wanted to welcome our new board members, Member Paro and Member Beduris, and we look forward to working with you collectively in the future. Thank you.
Valley View Office Personnel Council.
No report.
Thank you. Any old business for the board this evening?
Well, I don't see it, but I've discussed this before, and I'm bringing it back. This one is actually one that we have not taken into consideration, but I'm asking this board to take into consideration. We have the Those Who Excel Luncheon for all the young people who are excelling in whatever area, but I brought it before that we don't have a Those Who Excel for our special needs. So I'm asking this board to, again, consider that if we can honor and host a Those Who Excel for the general population, that we would consider having a Those Who Excel for our special needs. And another item that I brought, and will continually to do, is about our student representation. Now that we have, I know we have our new board members, and welcome, 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 on my left and my right, so I must be blessed, right? I get all of it. So thank God for that. And that our student representative, I brought that before when I came back from the conference, that us to look at. So now that we have new members that look at having a student representative from both of our high schools to sit on this board. And then, also to consider, as we just talked about, We Day and volunteer hours, that we would look at our requirements for graduation. There are so many other districts are requiring volunteer hours and not just for those students who are excelling. We all have something to give, so why, if we are looking out for all kids and giving them all access, why wouldn't these students, I don't care if they're C, Ds, F students, special needs, why would we not give them that blessing to allow them to have volunteer and community hours also? So I am asking, again, for the board to look at this.
Member Campbell, response to two of those items. Clearly, Erica Ekstrom and her team can look into recognition programs for the special education students that noted. We also have two awards at the Those Who Excel Luncheon that are specific to our special education population, so we do recognize them as well. But we, we can definitely look into expanding recognition for our special education students. And in terms of service projects, clearly, this administration can also, I am in agreement, I think it's, it's critical that we have service projects for our students as a, as a potential condition for graduation, so we can, the senior administration, senior leadership team can, can look at that as well and bring a report back to this board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Any announcements by the board? This is probably be the best time for our new members to say a few words, if you would like to, starting with Mr. Beduris. You could thank your mom and dad for having you, or whatever you'd like.
Well, they're here, so I'll say thanks. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Peril?
Just want to thank everyone for their support, and I want to introduce my husband, Micah, and my mom, Joyce Hact. Thank you for coming.
I've got, I got a couple of things that I'd like to first officially welcome, JT and Diane. I've known you guys for a while, look forward to working with you on the board and various committees and so forth, and representing our communities, both in Bolingbrook and Romyville. So thanks for offering your services, and wish you the best of luck. I'd like to thank, take this time, this week's a special week for teacher appreciation. I'd like to thank all of the teachers out there in our district, and really appreciate what you guys do across our district, so thank you for that. Finally, I'd like to thank a few people at RC Hill. I had the opportunity and the pleasure to spend the time last week, better part of about four or five hours, Ms. Becko, with the low incident team at RC Hill, and it was probably one of the best days I've had personally, professionally, in a long time. And so, to Gretchen, to Colleen, to Becky, to Lori, all of your paraprofessionals, everything, from outside at recess, your staff and your students, I would dare to say, were, were better and very well supervised, and really appreciated that. And to principally all, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to say goodbye to you, but thank you for, for allowing me to come into the building, and Dr. Mitchum, thank you for allowing that, because that was a wonderful experience, and I would recommend anybody to do that. So thank you, guys, and keep up the good work.
I just want to welcome the new board members, and thank you for your dedication to the community. And it's kind of funny, people say, oh, you run for a board, whatever, but it's, it's one thing to talk about doing something, it's another thing to put your name on the ballot. And you put your name on ballots, it's an endorsement from your neighbors and your friends and the people you don't know, and people who've heard of you and maybe not heard of you. So you guys should be commended, because there's a whole lot of people who talk about running for office, but there's very few who actually do. So congratulations, and I look forward to working with you both on the board, and special expertises that you bring. With that in mind, I will be sending out through, probably Shelley, an email with the list of all the committees that we have, and we will be appointing members to committees. Again, we can only have two members to a committee because of the Open Meetings Act, we can't violate that. So if you have, this goes to everybody, any particular committees that you would like to serve on, follow up with these emails as soon as you can, and we'll be discussing those at the next meeting, we'll make those appointments. That will help us get involved, and we have all kinds of committees, trust me. Some meet more often, some not as much, some meet as needed, but those will be coming down the pipe, as they say. So start thinking about those, look at those lists, give you a few weeks to take a look at it, and then we'll probably do those at the next meeting or the one after that. So Shelley, just kind of remind me to make sure that that gets done. I think that's, oh, and also, I have been, slipped a piece of paper, says Oakview Science Expo Night, 5:30 PM on May 21st. So the Oakview Science Expo, it's not the STEM, it's the Science Expo, correct? Anyone? Thank you. Oh, there you are, back in the corner. Thank you. So please plan to attend that, any and all. Dr. Mitchum?
If you're looking for some science exposition, there's your big chance.
Any other announcements by the board? Any announcements by the administration?
Tibet, doesn't Tibet have a multicultural fair this Friday?
I think, I think Member Sakura had an announcement from the board before our announcement.
Thank you. Couple things, I welcome the two board members also, both of them I've known for a while. And second of all, the golf outing for the Valley View Educational and Richman Foundation, I've been guaranteed, administrators, that you do not have a meeting that day, that you have to attend.
Ah.
So we hope to see there. Thank you.
And it's, that's an, actually, it's a very good event. It's very fun. Nine holes, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Jason Pascavage, Dr. Pascavage is nodding his head in the back.
He would know.
These guy's kids with him, too. The little guys. He's a really good golfer. He needs to give everybody five a side. So any announce, other announcements by the administration?
Yes, I have an announcement by the, oh, is there more announcements from the board?
Member Campbell has one.
Yes, I was trying to announce that Tibet has a multicultural fair this Friday on May 8th. That's what I was trying to announce, so I got it in.
And what time is that at?
Six.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Six o'clock. There you go. Announcements by the administration, Dr. Mitchum?
I'll be brief. Congratulations to Diana and JT. Look forward to working with you. Also, I want to echo Member Felice's, thank you to the teachers for National Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all the hard work that you guys do when venturing into those classrooms. I know it takes a tremendous amount of energy to do what you do, so I thank you for that Hi, Gretchen, how are you? Gretchen's my new friend. I'd also like to take this time to recognize our school nurses, because Wednesday, May 6th, is National Nurses Day, so congratulations to all of our nurses who have to... Particularly at the elementary level, I've seen what they do there, kids come in for everything. And then, I know that they were mad at me last year because I said I want them to call home for everything, so I know that that created a little bit of a controversy. So I hope this announcement has kind of eased that a little bit. So thank you again for the nurses and the teachers, job well done, and we, we recognize and appreciate your work.
I guess I'm taking over, because then I have just realized, once you said Wednesday, then we have Thursday, which is the National Day of Prayer. So, and that's a community, you know, again, we got this Valley View community, so that there will be a prayer breakfast, I believe it at, remember, Hanson's Church, from 6:00 AM to 7:30. So I tell little kids, wake up, you sleepyheads, get out of bed that morning if you desire to be there and with the state of our condition, and I'm glad that this opportunity to bring it back from prayer, because I didn't want us to leave again with not even think about the issues. And my greatest prayer concern right now is for our police officers. So if you believe in prayer, I'm asking you to pray. We just lost that other officer in New York, so I'm praying, if you have no other reason to come but to pray. You know, we look at Baltimore, but Bolingbrook, Romyville, Chicago, we're not exempt, you know, things that are happening around, it will happen our way. But as we come as a community, and they did address it, we don't want to talk about Baltimore, you know, because that's on the other side of the track, that's them people, that's us, you know, whatever we want, you know. But my philosophy, only by the grace of God, we could be those thugs, as we want to say, as we differentiate between an A student and an F student, and they are all capable of doing the same thing. So if you desire, if you like, come on out and meet us there. If not, that concern is my concern, is for the safety of our police officers all across the land. I know what that's entail, and I believe in prayer, so I'm praying for everybody, but that's my heart right now, after that officer and his family, that another one went down. So we definitely need to have some prayer, some compassion, some love, and if we had love for one another, we wouldn't have the issues that we do. But since this is a following word, and I'm going to stop now, see you there.
Thank you, Liz.
Yes.
Any announcements by the public?
I'm sorry, I just have one announcement. I'd like to remind our families that the deadline for our Summer Learning Experience program is this Friday, May 8th. We encourage you to sign up your children. It's a fantastic program for academic skill development and enrichment, and most of all,
development and enrichment, and most of all, it's fun, the kids love it, so please come join us this summer.
Any announcements by the public?
I also have an announcement, but it looks like we're going to return shortly, and I was wondering, my question, are we representing all of the riffing, or are we going to pay for it?
The, the issue, the riff was already voted on, there was no tabling of the issue. I wasn't here at that meeting, but I discussed it with the attorneys and fellow board members, that issue was settled that night, there was no tabling of the riff. So the riff is complete, and notifications will be going out.
They've been out.
They have been sent out, correct? Thank you. I'd be happy to talk to you at another time about it, but that's my understanding of the situation. So, thank you. Any announcements by the public? Hearing none, seeing none, motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, ayes have it. Have a safe evening, thank you, and drive safely.